Order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And in this moment of silence, let's please be mindful of former city councilman Gary Jackson, who passed away in the last week. We want to keep his family in mind. He was a good man who served us well at the city level and also served his country well in the military. I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, and a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number sixteen on the council agenda under special presentations. This evening, we have a distinguished citizenship recognition. And I'm happy to read that aloud honoring Rayland Tervier with a People Power Award. And the proclamation for that reads as such, whereas the reigning nation of states Nebraska preteen, Rayland understands the significance of community engagement and initiated her platform I Can in June two thousand twenty dedicated to making a positive impact in her community. And whereas through her I Can platform, Rayland collected and recycled cans and donated the proceeds to worthy causes such as the Ronald McDonald House in Omaha and the Northeast Nebraska Animal Shelter in Norfolk. And whereas Rayland's compassion extends beyond cans as she expanded her platform to include hosting a canned food drive benefiting the Salvation Army in Norfolk. And whereas recognizing the importance of honoring and supporting veterans, Rayland established Rayland's Warm Wishes, providing handmade blankets to the residents of the Norfolk Veterans Home. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Mooring, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, along with the Norfolk City Council hereby recognized Rayland Tervier for her extraordinary acts of citizenship. So I believe Rayland's here, there she is. Rayland, would you join me to receive the proclamation? Rayland, can you tell us how old you are?
Okay.
And what grade are you in at school?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade? How do you have time to go to school? Doing all these things?
I don't know. It's sometimes hard.
I bet it is. You've accomplished a lot. How do you come up with your ideas to do these things for other people?
Um, sometimes I just randomly get them when I'm thinking, like when I'm doing schoolwork. Or sometimes I'm at home and I'm just thinking and drawing pictures and stuff like that. And then I go up to my parents and I'm like, hey mom, I wanna do this and this.
What does mom say?
She'll be like, alright.
I bet, yeah, I bet mom and dad help a lot with some of these projects, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, I wanna say thank you for everything that you're doing for those in our community who need help. That's very special. And not everybody has that thoughtfulness and kindness and compassion to go out and do extra. But you're doing it, so thank you. Okay, we're gonna get a picture, okay? I've got the proclamation for the recognition and also a certificate here that reads, "The City of Norfolk's People Power Award is proudly presented to Rayland Tervier for distinguished citizenship and generosity, in this instance for her efforts through initiatives like I Can and Rayland's Warm Wishes." Okay, so help me hold that.
Three, two, one.
Very good to meet you, Rayland. All right, can we just stop there? Okay. Next, under special presentations, item number seventeen, a citizens committee report. So we welcome up front whoever is giving the citizens committee report.
I will get that honor. I'm Troy Wirick. First of all, I have to follow Rayland, so that's not an easy task to do, so good job. So on January twenty-fourth, a group of citizens were convened to give, to kinda look at a couple of things in Norfolk that where there was some need, one being roads and the second being the police station. So we had met with city staff and we met as a group three different times. We got a presentation, a great presentation from the city and for the roads and then follow up with a tour of the police department. And through that, our group had, the group was summoned really to try to look for creative ways to possibly fund these two, these two problems that we have. So after, after we, after a lot of time, energy, discussion, involvement from the group, information from the city, talking to councilmen, we kinda came up with an interesting idea and it's just a proposal to the council, a recommendation. And in essence, what we're, what the group had determined, right away we ruled out property tax, that's kind of was a no starter for us or for anybody. And so we're kinda left with other means, how do we get this done? The police department was a real eye opener, the tour, it is a problem on the horizon. If we don't do something about it in a couple of years, we will have to do something about it. So we determined that that was the group's priority, really to see to it that we could put a plan together that could be publicly supported, that you guys, the council and the public, the city could all get behind where we could get this problem solved and behind us and to help keep our community safe over the next decade plus two, three decades. So anyway, what the group had determined unanimously is that we recommend that the council authorize a half cent sales tax with a four-year sunset. We, this is a pay-as-you-go plan. We, the council will start collecting that, or the city would start collecting that if voter approved in April. And conceivably within twenty-four months with, there could be a pay, the station could be built and paid for solving this problem that we have in the community. Another thing, the highlight of that, there's really no debt, no added debt, it's pay-as-you-go. There'll be some, some, a little more depth to that. But once the police station's paid for, all of the allocated funds for that four-year term then would be directed towards street improvements or road improvements. So it's estimated with the two to three year, that the police station, depending where the final budget comes in and the sales tax collection, it'd be somewhere between two and three years to pay for the police, the police station. That would give us potentially two to, one to two years to collect and help expedite, accelerate the city's road improvement plan. Also, we are, part of our plan, we are asking the council to consider not issuing the bond that's, that was passed in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, the five million dollar bond for the accelerated street improvement budget. And then the other thing too, we just need to better educate the public of the need, the road need, or the police needs, the police station. A lot of times we drive by that building, looks good from the outside, when we dial nine-one-one, we have help there, the policemen are there when we need them. But we really have to take care of these officers that risk their lives to help keep us, keep us safe, so. I think that we, it was educational and we had a lot of good input from all elected officials, the council, the public, just every, all the feedback was really good on that. But that's my presentation.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Okay. Questions from the council on that? Or, we understand these are recommendations, I do wanna say thank you for the committee coming together and over the course of several weeks, meeting with staff to talk about these different needs and priorities and ideas on how to solve them. So we know a lot went into it, so thank you for that, for volunteering your time and dedicating your time to that. I think where we go from here is this council will deliberate on some of these ideas. I think we have, if there is to be a sales tax initiative in this election cycle, I think the council has to authorize it by when? Danny, can you help us with the dates on this?
The latest would be August.
August, okay. So got a little bit of time, but as Troy said, doing the education part of this and the community about both police station and street needs is an important part as well. So again, thank you to the committee, we appreciate the work that went involved with this and there will be ongoing discussions and talks amongst council. Thank you. All right, with that, we will move into the public hearings and related action portion of the agenda, item eighteen. We'll open this public hearing to consider a request from Donald Gertis to consider a zoning change from RR Rural Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial District, excuse me, on property addressed as eighty-three, seven-seven-three, five-hundred-and-fifty-seventh Avenue. And to open this public hearing and give us some background, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner. Val.
Hi, thanks. So, okay, it just came up on the screen, this is kind of in our southwest, southeast corner of our ETJ, you can kinda see the hatched lines, that is actually out in the county then, just kinda to show where we are. And I've outlined the piece of property because they did a survey here a little while ago, it was one twenty acre-ish piece of land and they have split it off into two pieces. And so the outlined area is what is actually being asked for the zone change because they had a business operating kind of as a home occupation along with the house and they want to expand that. So then it needs to, you know, actually get into a commercial or industrial district that would fit that. And so that's why they are here today and why they did this kind of lot split survey. If there's any questions, and the applicant is here also.
Thank you, Val. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to comment can do so now.
Good evening, members of the council, my name's Don Gertis, I'm with Lower Southside Customs LLC. It's a small powder coating business that I've had for about eight years now and I've been trying to grow it slowly. And I come before the zoning board and they approved it. And I understand that there had been a few concerned neighbors, so I'd kinda like to address that as well. I'd like to thank council members that did stop out, reached out to me, talked to me, asked me kinda what my plan was there. So if you have any questions, I'd happily take them. I'd also note that two of my neighbors, the one to the south, Bob Hoovy, he approached me and talked to me and he does not have any pushback. And my neighbor across the road to the east, Justin Young, he also did not have any pushback, he supports my zone change with no issues. I understand there was a little bit of rumor about maybe starting a junkyard or salvage yard. My application is for light industrial, to be a salvage yard or a scrapyard, you have to be heavy industrial. That is not, simply to expand my powder coating business, is what it is. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
I spoke to one of your neighbors and their concern was why would you have to zone the entire ten acres?
Um, it was easier, I spoke with Val and she gave me a couple ideas and then I talked to a surveyor. My surveyor told me that that would be the, probably the most effective and easiest way to go about doing it, cost effective on my part as well. And also looking towards the future proactively, in the future if we'd like to add something or sell part of it off or do something more, it's already zoned, it's taken care of, so we can do that.
So do you plan on selling some off then?
Not initially, but I've had some people who were interested in some and that's maybe something I would consider in the future, but I'd have to see what their intent was first.
Where, where exactly would this be happening? Is it already happening, I guess, in the structure that's in the red and is it going to expand from that?
It's going to expand south of that, yes.
Inside of another building, I assume?
Uh, in addition to a pre-existing building.
In, would any of this be outside? Like storage or how, what's the capacity? I guess what?
For the most part, it'd be, no, I don't, there would not be much that would be outside. I have said, I used to own a small scrap iron recycling business, I since got rid of that, sold all that off and have been in the process of cleaning that up. So that is all getting taken care of. As far as the powder coating aspect of it, some of it will, if it's large enough, will have to be stored outside, but the majority of it is small items. Currently, most people have to go to Battle Creek, to Beermans to have stuff sandblasted or to Johnson Ornamental in Stanton. We used to have a powder coating business, Klasson, I believe, fabrication, they did powder coating on a rather large scale. My addition would not be quite that large. But I feel like we could certainly benefit from something in the community here, another powder coating business.
Does this change anything, I guess environmentally? It's, you already doing some of this out there?
Yes, I've been powder coating small items for approximately eight years and I decided to turn into an LLC and the need has arisen to expand in.
So enlarging containment, I don't know if there's any environmental issues where that falls into?
With powder coating, there isn't so much as it's pretty environmentally safe. It's a paint basically that's baked on, it electrostatically attracts to the metal and then it's baked on in an oven, so it's all contained. I mean, you have a little bit of heat and then you just sweep up basically when you're done.
Right, so everything, everything's gonna be done indoors?
Yeah, all that has to be done indoors.
Sandblasting at all before you do this?
I currently have Beermans sandblast for me and Elkorn dustless blasting, sandblast for me. If in the future I need it, I could always add a sandblasting operation too. And that would allow me to do that there if it's zoned that way.
I think that brings into question of why this wouldn't be a conditional use permit rather than zoning or rezoning a whole large piece of property. If, if it's already, if it would be zoned the way it's anticipated, I-1.
It's zoned rural residential now and I.
But I mean, if this whole thing went to I-1, is it not possible that you could just add all kinds of different types of processes that may be inside or outside that affects neighbors in a different way? And why wouldn't it be say a conditional use permit?
I was thinking along the same lines, cause then you would have, it'd be safer for the neighbors in that area too, cause if you sell off some of the industrial, light industrial, you know, who's to say what? And then what do you get next? Now you've got light industrial there, what's the next one, what's the next neighbor gonna do when they went, they wanna go from RR to commercial, I mean, just kinda set up a chain, just chain of events?
I can understand what you're talking about. And that's why, the only person who has approached me is Cody Jensen. And he approached me about purchasing some land a long time ago and he would, if anything he would maybe do is put up a workshop for his trucks, cause he currently does it in town and someplace he has. And then he would maybe build something out there and expand out there. That's really the only thing that I've been approached about.
Right, and you can still, you can still do that with a conditional use permit?
Yeah, well, yeah.
You'd just have to, you'd have to apply for it.
Yeah, he would.
Right.
But it is allowed under the light industrial tract.
So I guess in answer to how to protect the neighbors, if this goes in, it would be like any other industrial or commercial to residential or ag or anything like that, we have our buffer yard requirements. And so that's actually why the lot line between the house and the existing current building is actually forty feet away because you have a forty-foot buffer yard that you can't put any buildings, structures, you know, anything like that in that forty feet. And then depending on what goes in there, if it's like the back of a building, major circulation for traffic, outdoor storage, anything like that, then you actually have to screen it too. So there's two ways, there's buffering that's automatic and there's screening depending on what goes on with it too.
So again, why not a conditional use permit?
Because this is just automatically allowed in I-1.
Right, but he could apply for a conditional use permit, we'd have the same thing happening in just that structure rather than all this, all these acres, you know, ten acres in light industrial or I-1.
I guess I don't understand the conditional use permit question. I mean, it's outright permitted right now in I-1, so there is no cup that would be required.
What I'm saying is leaving it as RR and have a cup at, on RR.
You can't do that as a cup in RR.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just seems like a large piece of property for a business that's gonna be contained into one building.
The other way to get at those concerns then would be, what you noted, Don, is maybe a little bit more complicated in drawing up the plat, but just isolating that structure where you'll be doing that activity for I-1 and leave the rest RR.
And that was a talk, was just doing several acres, the frontage part along the road there and then not doing the rest of it. My surveyor suggested I just do it all, just to kinda speed along the process and make it a little bit more, a little easier on my end. And hopefully it'd be a lot simpler, he wouldn't have to do much plat work and a little more cost effective. And then he thought, if in the future I would decide to add on or do something, it would already be zoned appropriately for what I may decide to do. Just trying to think ahead proactively, I guess.
I see, and I totally get that and I want him to have his own business out there, I really do. But I also, I know you talked about neighbors that were fine or okay or in favor of you doing that, but I've also had calls from two people that are not.
I have heard, that's why I wanted to address the spot, the rumors about the junkyard and salvage yard, that's not my intent at all. I'm not applying for heavy industrial, which is required to have a salvage yard. Light industrial is where I was at.
I just don't think the forty-foot, Val, would be, so say with the light industrial, the forty-foot wouldn't be a big enough buffer. It doesn't insulate the neighbors from what can move into that piece of property.
You mean towards the south there?
Yeah, so you could sell that to somebody and forty-foot would not.
Then they would also have to be approved. If I did sell it to somebody, they would have to come before you and ask for a conditional use permit to do what they wanted to do with it, at which point you can say yes or no.
Not.
Oh, not if it's already zoned.
Yeah.
But for a trucking business, they would have to have a cup, I believe.
Truck repair?
Yeah, for a truck repair.
Yeah, that would need a conditional use permit for truck repair, yes.
I kinda read through what was allowed and basically light automotive repair and body work and stuff like that.
That would be permitted, but if you're gonna work on semis and do a truck repair, then that is a cup, yes.
Yeah, that has to be a conditional use permit, so.
But with concern for the neighbor, I think that, like everybody is saying, is that the size of the lot is the question and then you were to sell some off? And they start parking things outside, what is the, what is the enforcement to, so it doesn't, so junk's not sitting everywhere? I think that's the neighbor's concern.
That's absolutely understandable, I guess.
And then once you sell it, you have no control over it anyway, so.
Yeah, I would have no control over it, so.
So I think that's a concern.
Selective about who I would sell that for and understand their intentions before doing so.
Don, do you think you could have it re-surveyed just to the area that you're gonna conduct business?
I'm sure it can be done, it's gonna take more time and be more cost, but I mean, then I'll have to go through the zoning board again and back here again. I was just trying to move things along as quickly as I could. And that was kinda what I went by, what my surveyor suggested and that seemed like the easiest, easiest way to do that.
I think I can understand that, but there's enough concern that it'd probably be appropriate. Means you still have a sort of a business going on there right now.
Yeah.
And I, and I understand, I really do, I got, I probably have some stuff that needs powder coated also, but, but I'm thinking in concerns that are, the concerns that are out there, it'd be beneficial, I think, for everybody for us to do something like table this and have a better discussion where it might benefit Don too.
What were the concerns that were brought forth to you?
Upkeep, what would happen outside, what would happen in the future? You know how it is, it's, anything can change for anybody at any time in the future. And desperate times bring desperate measures, you know what I mean? So there's just concern of wanting to keep the area around there nice, neat and clean. And if a business would be in a very small area, just zoning that one small area, to me, it looks like there could be almost a clear cut line, obviously, when you have an L-shaped piece of property, that you could do something similar to that. And maybe, maybe appease everybody. Is this ten acre plot, right? Cause it was two-twenty or twenty?
It was twenty and it's set into two tens, yes. I believe that way he didn't have to do a bunch of plat work if I.
Right, so state statute says you do not have to do a plat if all lots are going to be over ten acres and they were just over ten acres. And so that's why a plat is not with this and they could just go directly to a survey, meets and bounds deeds, get that filed at the county to make these lots and then come with the, the zone change with just that one surveyed off lot. So I guess I'll run through a couple options here for you. I heard tabling. If you table this and not bring it back next time, then it automatically dies. And you do not do a six-month waiting period. If you deny it tonight and it dies that way, then there is a six-month waiting period before a zone change can come back and try again. So I guess there's a couple ways to do that. If you want him to go through a replat to just take off two or three acres or whatever it is instead of the ten, then that plat would essentially, everything would have to start over again, republish the zone change with the new platted lot that that meets and bounds. So that would hit planning commission for both of those and then both of them would come to city council at the same time. So there's a few ways however you guys wanna tackle this. Or if you wanna approve it tonight, then, then it's done. So if there's any questions on procedures and options, I can help with that.
Let me ask another question, is there any I-1 around us, anywhere near it, or is it all RR?
I believe rural, Red Dead, RR and agricultural.
It's mostly ag, yeah.
That was the only concern that my neighbor to the east, Justin, had was if it was gonna affect his zoning, I said, no, it will not affect your zoning, yours will still be ag.
Not yet, until somebody else comes along and says, well, there's I-1 there, I wanna put I-1 here.
Then they'd have to buy his property.
I, I know it's more work, but I think it's beneficial to rework this and make it a smaller piece of property that would be I-1, so. I'm gonna make a motion that we table this.
I'll remind that we're in public hearing stage still. So I would recommend we finish the public hearing and then move on. But I think the takeaway from the discussion is, Don, we wanna find a practical solution to let you move forward. Maybe the simplest way to do that is. Um, maybe the simplest way to do that is, uh, what Councilman Grandquist is alluding to and, and um, i- isolating that area as I one and doing the plat, even though it involves a little more work and time. I, I, I think it probably is the right solution planning wise, um, given neighbors' concerns, so. Um, but, but again, we are in public hearing, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
If you guys don't have any more questions for me, that's really about all I can say.
Okay.
Donnie, I have one, so thanks for showing us around today.
Absolutely.
Um, what, what, when did you wanna start construction on this?
Um.
Cause you weren't looking to wait.
I was hoping last year. And I spoke with a, uh, um, I can't remember his name, a constructor, and he was kinda worried about it being zoned rural residential and what we could do to possibly make that happen and some of the, uh, the issues with that, so I spoke with him and he thought maybe, well, we could rezone it. And I thought, well, you know, that's probably the best thing to do since technically I should probably be in a different zone for what I'm wanting to do. And then I spoke with Val and she gave me a couple ideas and I reached out to a surveyor. And he said, let's just make this quick and easy as possible for you, that's kind of where we are, so.
And you have some equipment out there that's ready for construction, you have.
Yeah, I purchased.
Concrete?
Yeah, concrete block and stuff ready to go.
What was the planning commission?
Thanks, yep, okay.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Is it public hearing, anyone else wishing to comment can do so now?
I'm Lauren Bosler. I'm one of the neighbors out there and I'm just, I don't oppose what Don's trying to do. I live to the south there. And I don't, I had talked to a few of you guys and gals, uh, um, I don't oppose what Don's doing. My proposal is, is I think it's too many acres to zone light industrial. My second complaint, if you drove out there at all or looked around, is that's all in the two mile corridor. It's all in that red X on the plat sheet. If, if we zone a business out there, it needs, does the city have a ruling that it's gotta be held up to the standards of a busy business in town? That's my concern, keeping it neat. Um, we have a lot of, lot of trash in that area, I was, I'm just gonna say, and, um, it blows into the neighbors, our cornfields, um, not that Don's would, I'm just saying. I, I'd like to see a smaller parcel. And if it has to stay, has city standards, has to keep up with. Um, that's my concern, because they keep coming out a little bit further, a little bit further than the city does with their boundary. Um, I'm real fussy, I'll just tell you right from the beginning. And, um, that's my concern, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, Val, maybe you can address that, any, any business operation, um, within the city's ETJ would have to adhere to city code compliance, correct?
Right, they'd still have the buffer yards and the, um, whether they have trash or, you know, outdoor storage allowed or not outdoor storage allowed. Um, we don't go looking and checking on people necessarily, but if we get a complaint, then, then we tend to go out and, and check on it.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to comment can do so now? Okay?
I just, I just wanna add to that, I think, Lauren, I, I drove out there also, and there is a lot of properties that have a lot of items, um, outside, everywhere. And Don's is, to me, Don's is not like that, and that's why I wanted to clarify, this would be an indoor thing and not a bunch of things stored outside, I truly believe Don's gonna run a legit business inside. But, but there is concern that there is a lot of properties with a lot of miscellaneous property outside. That, that probably is within our jurisdiction to take a look at, but you don't wanna use a forceful hand, but you want some encouragement to keep things nice.
I agree, we, that, there's a lot to be cleaned up out there, and we talked today, Val, you know, about code enforcement. And could we done, but, um, you know, to hold up his business because of surrounding properties, kind of, doesn't really set well with me. Um, I get what you're saying, I get that, I get that's probably too big. I hate to hold him up for, you know, for this, for his business too, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a tough one.
Can I ask a question on that? Does he really have to hold up constructing his building just for I one? Why wouldn't he be able to do that in RR anyway?
He should be able to build the building, it's just you're not gonna operate the business out of it.
He's already doing some of that anyway, it's just not expanded. But he could still build his building.
Right.
We wouldn't hold up construction. Am I thinking correctly? I mean, if you didn't know he was doing it without him standing there, you wouldn't have a clue anyway, he'd still build his building.
Well, he came in.
Really?
Yeah, he came in to ask for, what was it, to, to double your building almost? Yeah, even more than double the building. And so when that building permit comes in, we go, okay, you're RR zoned, is this going to be an agricultural building? Because then if it's agricultural uses, then you don't necessarily have a limit on your square footage. If you RR are and you're a detached accessory structure, not agricultural, um, then there's a three thousand square foot limit to it. Well, he was going beyond that, and so that would kind of see where we were going down the road with this. And so, no, right now, he, we wouldn't give him a building permit necessarily until we know that he can actually do what he needs to do. And he probably wouldn't wanna put that money in there unless he knows that it's gonna be zoned correctly for it too.
I hate to keep beating on this, but I got another question because of that. So, so could this be zoned ag and he puts up that building with a cup? And then your cup is just around that.
Well, n- no, because we have a minimum forty acres in ag. So his total thing is less than half that, so.
All right, any other discussion or comments during the public hearing? Okay, singing and hearing none, uh, planning commission report, please.
North Fork Planning Commission held a public hearing on March fifth, two thousand twenty four at the request of Donald Gertis to consider a zoning change from RR rural residential district to I one light industrial district on property addressed as eight three seven seven three, five hundred and fifty seventh avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a five to zero vote.
Thank you, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item nineteen. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty eight seventy one approving zoning change from RR to I one on property addressed as eighty three seven seven three, five hundred and fifty seventh avenue.
Oliver, consideration of ordinance fifty eight seventy one, second.
Motion second, discussion, counsel.
But I think here, obviously, we can, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this, um, to hopefully reduce the size of I one. Obviously, if that motion doesn't go forward or there's no second, then we, then we go forward. If I'm thinking right, Brianna, then we go forward on the regular as it's proposed, so, um, it is what it is, but for now.
Before you make that motion, can I?
Sure.
Um, I, I'm with you on the, maybe the smaller size, I'm not really liking the ten acres. But just to clarify again with Val, what is the shortest timeframe so we're not delaying this any longer for him, for us to proceed?
So if you want a smaller lot than the ten acres, then you would probably want to table and then not bring it back next time. So you don't have the six month waiting period, and so that he can go back to the surveyor to get a plat set up, and hopefully that wouldn't take too long for them to do a smaller plat to then bring forward, and then we start the, the public hearing process over again. So probably start to finish is, as long as it doesn't get denied tonight to, to trigger that six month waiting period. You could probably see him back here again in two months. Right.
Thank you.
Well, and, and I'll add to that before I, before I make this motion, um, if there's no second and it's not tabled, then we vote on it. If it passes, he goes forward, obviously, as everything is I one, tell me if I'm wrong, Brianna. But if it does get tabled, then we go through that. Either way, it's, it's out there, so. I'm gonna make a motion to table this so we could try to make a happy ends on both sides of neighbors and himself.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, and no discussion on, uh, motion to table, so please vote. Okay, all right, we're, we're dealing with new technology here, so bear with us.
All right, now you can vote, and this is on tabling. Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arns, Snorton, Webb, Hildebrand, Clausen, Muren, voting in opposition, McCarthy. Ordinance number fifty eight seventy one is placed on the table.
Okay, with that, we move into our regular agenda and item number twenty with the, for motion to consider approval to advertise for bids for the concrete repair project two thousand twenty four.
Oliver, consideration of approval to advertise for bids for concrete repair in two thousand twenty four? Second.
Motion and second, for some background on this, I believe we hear from Chad Roberts? No, that's the wrong one, that would make sense that it would not be Chad, it would be Steve Ramus, yeah. Sorry, sorry about that, Chad.
Mayor and counsel, this is a concrete repair project for two thousand twenty four funded through our, uh, city highway allocation funds. Uh, it is generally line one and two in our CIP, um, street repair by, by, uh, street repair, street maintenance by contract. This does include, if we recall, last summer, there was a desire by council to, um, fund an additional five million in street repair over two years. And as a function of that conversation, we did survey the community, uh, in September, October, uh, compiled that information. The first item listed here was number one on that list, the eighteenth street from Maple Avenue to Michigan Avenue. Um, so we have included that here, assuming, um, and based on some recent conversation that rather than bond that, that we would just, um, pursue those on an annual basis, um, using the CHAF funding that was gonna pay for the, the five million dollar bond. Um, so that's, there could, there could be some conversation there if we wanted to structure that differently. But that's the way we have structured it here. So that eighteenth street from Maple Avenue to Michigan Avenue, those repairs, um, were from that citizen survey. The remaining repairs there are just part of our, our, um, priority street repairs, um, across the system. Or the big one there that people probably see a lot is the Taylor Avenue from twenty fourth street to Pazwalk Avenue. That would be the area behind Hy-Vee, um, Menards area. So substantial work on, on that particular section. Some of these other sections in here are, um, we have a lot of spalling generally in one lane or the other there. Um, so anyway, I would ask any, or answer any questions about that. We intend to have this on the street for bids in the next two weeks, opening up bids, um, early April and then awarding that probably at the second week meeting in April.
Well, we were just presented a plan tonight that is highly different than what you've got presented in front of us right now. So was this, is this on the agenda just to be political? I mean, it feels that way.
No, 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 no. Um, this is, so recently, we've added the eighteenth street. So just participating and in conversations with, with the committee, um, you know, we it's, it's in our budget to, to bond that and move that forward. I didn't know if there was still a desire to do that, so I, I can take.
Well, that's my point, we're, we're gonna have a discussion about this. We just got presented a plan that changed the way the bonding was gonna be, you see what I'm saying? It's like, so we get a, citizen community comes up and we talk about this percent sales tax, that's supposed to last four years and sunset, and within that, you're supposed to, at the end of it, it's supposed to have four or five million left over to bond the streets or pay for the streets without bonding. I'm, I'm, that's kind of.
So, let me back up, you're, you're correct, and that is confusing. So when we went through the budget process last year, we, we, we structured and presented a budget where we were taking four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we developed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for the five million dollar CHAF bond for that, for that citizen survey piece. Um, and so that's, that is, those are budgeted dollars within our current budget. It's a matter of whether do we want to bond that and then use those budgeted dollars for that? Or do we just want, do you just want me to pull that four hundred and fifty thousand roughly in, into this and do this?
I think to be fair, Steve, we, sorry, but don't we have to have some time to digest what just got presented to us tonight before we make a decision on this bonding? I feel like the timing's kind of.
Now, I understand, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, okay.
And, and we can certainly, we can certainly do that. So the piece that would come out, that's why I wanted to point out that eighteenth street.
That's why I asked if it was political or not.
We can cross out the eighteenth street from Maple Avenue on here, um, and not move that forward with this year's maintenance contract.
But, um, but, but, hold on, I mean, are we, okay, so do, why don't we discuss what just got presented in front of us? I mean, we've, people gotta digest this. This item, I, we can't even really talk about it right now because we just got presented a new plan that we didn't.
I think what Steve's saying, it's, it's one project that was identified outside as part of that project. I understand what you're saying, but, but Steve also has to go forward with bidding
You do, but you don't.
Other projects that we already had scheduled outside the bond.
So there's, you know, we have our, generally, I'm gonna call it our annual concrete repair project that we put out. That is separate from the five million dollars that was discussed and.
Okay, okay, I just hold on a second, sorry.
We put two hundred and fifty thou, two hundred, two point five million into the
Right.
Twenty three, twenty four budget and twenty four, twenty five budget.
But, but.
But that's, that is a, we, we're looking at that as a totally separate project. Aside from our, our standard maintenance by contract.
I did, I'm just, I'll say this just one more time. However, if you go with a plan presented tonight, is, won't that change how you, cause you're, cause the taxes collected, they, they talked just a minute, I just heard it. Uh, that, those would be coming in, in what, July? So that, doesn't that change that, so if you're self paying, you're self paying, you've gotta, it's gonna change that.
So the dollars, you know, if, if we scratch out the eighteenth street from Maple Avenue,
Right.
because that's part of the, the, where we went out to the community and asked them to prioritize. If we just scratch that off, what we're looking for is our street maintenance by contract, that's the, those are the dollars that are left here. Um, those are gonna go into these segments. The, the, the five million that was, we asked the community to priori, prioritize, that five million's gonna go into those areas. And those, those are different.
Yeah, but if your spending plan is totally different, isn't it gonna make a difference on how you do your street maintenance too?
It won't make a difference on everything else on here.
Okay. So I just wonder how that.
Cause it's, I mean, i- i- in, in large part, in big.
Cause essentially what's gonna happen is if you don't bond, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm assum, assuming that would have been out of CHAF to pay for the bonds. So isn't that gonna, now that four hundred and fifty can go to street maintenance.
But it's, right, so when we, when we went through that budget, when we went through the budget session last year, we identified money that was being, that was being otherwise transferred out of chance, transferred out of CHAF to use to pay that bond.
Right, well, I remember that, and with council priority dollars and whatnot, but.
So, and when you look at the five million that was prioritized, um, that the community prioritized, that is all, none of that is reconstruction, that is all panel repair, joint repair, pothole repair. Um, so it's all repair, right?
I, I think that's important to know where that came from, and it's fair also to ask about whether any of those projects should be in what we're considering tonight, but that process of, um, adding additional resources to street repair came out of last year's budget that we all voted on, right? That was authorized. We gave staff the directive to go out to determine what street needs were most pressing, to get at the worst of the worst, right? And the, and the justification in going to bond was to front some of that money with the idea that if you don't triage here and get at some of that worst of the worst, those streets will continue to deteriorate and two, three, four, five years down the road could instead be, instead of being maintenance projects right now, would be full reconstructions and cost a lot more than they would today. So that was, that was why we did that as a council. Let's, let's not forget that we authorized this as part of the budget last year to tell staff to go forward. And to Steve's point, we went to a community survey to determine what those projects were scored as. And that's all true, that's what, that's something that we did.
I'm not trying to deny that, that.
So what I was trying to do here, Shane, was I was just looking at the fact that we're six months into this current fiscal year. And so I pulled, I said, well, I'm just gonna take that four fifty that we were generally used, then I'll put it into this here with that item. And then that gives us more time to have the bigger conversation and just figure out how we wanna, how we wanna do the rest of that.
So doing this doesn't require initiating a bond, Steve?
Requiring it doesn't initiate a bond. If we want to go ahead, you know, let's, let's take the next month or whatever that is and have the conversation on how we wanna push the other four, four and a half million dollars out. But in the meantime, I'm taking this year's allocation that would go to the bond and putting it here just, just to get as much work done in this bid as as we could.
And and to clarify, if these are approved, it's not gonna change the way you're doing your street maintenance regardless?
That's correct.
Whatever plan gets approved for paying for streets?
That's correct.
Okay.
This, this would be doing what we would do anyway. We acted last year to do more because we heard from citizens saying that streets were top priority.
I know, it just sounds funny when you have a, you get a plan presented to you about budgets and changing the budget, and then we have a street plan.
And let's remember, these are recommendations that came to us tonight that will be deliberated on by the council, but.
Right.
Yeah, but I think your point, Steve, was that one of these projects is in there because it was, it rose to the top as part of the community survey that was done in accordance with the the plan that the council authorized last year.
That's correct.
All right, any other discussion or questions on this, on the concrete repair program?
So are we, are we omitting Eighteenth Street from Maple to Michigan Avenue then?
If you would like to, just to hold that that five million dollar package for conversation, we, you know, sure can. If you want me to take the first year's allocation, that four hundred and fifty dollars that's in this year's budget and plug it in, we can, we can do that too.
But I.
Well, isn't that the whole point of?
But that four hundred and fifty, I thought you were using to pay the, if the bond was.
So now when we would look, if we pull the trigger and leave that in here, we would look for about a four and a half million dollar bond.
Is it gonna hold you up to, to not, to move this to next meetings? And then we could have the discussion, at least that way a person has discussion about what the plan presented. And if, but but I guess you're saying this, it's not gonna change your construction, what you're putting ahead first.
Right.
Okay.
It, I would say.
So you're just saying Eighteenth would not be bonded. We go forward with this tonight, would not be bonded.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be part of the bonded larger project of five million dollars or say the four and a half million dollars that would be remaining. You know, there could be a conversation as to whether or not you wanted to move a big chunk of that forward and bond it, or we just do it differently.
Would we have to make an amendment to it then?
To answer your, to answer your question, Shane, no. Would this, would this, would this hold up the, the shift if we wanted to have some more conversation about this and bring this back to council at the next meeting? No, this is a relatively small amount of work that we're, that we'd be bidding out.
How does that affect schedules then to, to change question?
You know, we'd be, you're you're pushing, you're pushing, you're pushing it a month. So, you know, I mean, right now, is that, I would say that's a big deal to the contractors who are gonna bid this in terms of getting this work lined up? Or are they gonna go somewhere else and?
Steve, with getting bids, I just don't wanna authorize any spending until we have some idea about what, how we're moving forward paying for everything.
Yeah. Would this prod, would this Eighteenth Street be, Eighteenth Street project be recommended regardless, Steve? Would it be included among these bids, among this big package?
If yeah, it, I I would say it truly doesn't matter to me if it's simpler to scratch it out, to preserve the bigger conversation. I would say carve it carve it out and we can preserve the larger conversation if that seems to be the.
I guess what I'm asking is it one of those projects that is among the worst of the worst that you ideally would get to this year, regardless of of how it's paid? Because we pulled the trigger tonight, we don't bond, it just means we don't bond it, right?
Right, right. We're not authorizing any spending tonight, we're authorizing.
We're going just to go into bids, yes, correct, right.
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with everything going to bid, I just worried that it.
That, and then that, that's a good.
It's shocking when you're going through your.
That, that's a good point, we're just going to bids right now, we do have time to deliberate on how to finance.
Yeah, until August, basically. I mean, you know, that's when it's gotta be on the ballot, so, but you're gonna need to know before August.
Again, I.
For the streets portion of it.
If it is simpler, if it is simpler, you know, in in terms of your thought process to carve that out, I I would, I would say carve carve it out of the motion.
Well, in.
But then we delay another month, yeah.
Yep.
Well, I need to, it's in, I'm kinda, it's in respect to the people to just spend the time to present a plan to us.
Right.
You know, and then.
And the plan, and they're, they're not here and I could.
We haven't fully.
The conversation was just to spend it as we have it. So that first four hundred and fifty thousand would be programmed in this fiscal year.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And so that's just, we're just spending the dollars that were part of that whole bigger conversation on the community-driven street repairs and putting that first four fifty into this.
I I got a question on this thing. If we move forward for just bidding, but we don't, let's say we put something with streets on the ballot, which we have to have a decision done by August and obviously it goes in November for, for a decision. Are we carting far the horse? Are we gonna have to have this rebid if something isn't going to be maybe done until another year or two?
Eighteenth Street might be rebid, that'd be the big one, the rest of it's all in the budget with the four fifty out of CHAF.
Is that what we're saying? I don't, I don't think that's.
No, so the four fifty, so the number one street priority repair was Eighteenth Street from Maple to Michigan. That was the number one citizen selection. So what this is doing is saying for this current fiscal year, where we have that extra four fifty in the budget, it's just taking that four fifty and putting it into the eight hundred thousand or so, nine hundred thousand that's already in the budget for street repair by maintain, you know, street maintenance by contract. It's just adding that four fifty to that. And that is this bid for this fiscal year.
Were you gonna use that four fifty to pay the CHAF bond?
No, it would be used, if we were to put out, if we were to put out a two and a half million dollar job totally separate from this, Eighteenth Street would be in part in that. And the four fifty that is in this current fiscal year's budget would go to that bond. I'm just taking out the number one project, putting it into this, and that four fifty that's in our budget this year would just go to this. I'm just pulling it out of that one and putting it in this one because the four fifty is, those are funds that are in this year's budget. Whether they go to pay it, pay a contractor or pay a bond, they're four, it's four hundred and fifty thousand that's in this year's budget. And so like the mayor is saying, it just allows me to get the Eighteenth Street done now versus wait till a bid in the summer or fall that would be done in next year.
But was the four fifty part of the recommendation to pause the roads until the police station is finished? Was that not some of the application of funds?
I don't think so, except.
No, it's on a CHAF, that's CHAF money. So they have to go to roads, so.
Yeah, I think what they were, they were, within that bond, within that potential bond for the fire station, there would be dollars towards the end of that bond, as the police station paid off, there would be some residual dollars left there from the sales tax that could go to streets. Has nothing to do with the five million that's two and a half million in this year's budget and two and a half million in next year's budget that would be paid for by the four fifty. It's a totally different conversation.
Well, I think it's, if we're just talking about getting these bids back, they still have, the bids still have to be approved anyway.
Right.
So you're not, no, no allocations are gonna be made to any projects until we have a idea of what's going on.
And when we bid these, we bid, each one of these segments is a separate bid within the larger bid documents. And so we can award any one of them. So we could choose just not to award the Eighteenth Street portion.
Okay. All right, any other discussion or comments? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item twenty-one would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to D N Tanks LLC doing business as D N Tanks of Nebraska LLC of Grand Prairie, Texas for the two MG treated water storage tank project for an amount of three point six nine six million dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve contract to D N N Tanks LLC.
Second.
Motion second. Now Chad Roberts, our Water Systems Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What we got sent before you here is the contract from D N N Tank for the two million gallon storage tank out there at the West Water Treatment Plant. A little history on this tank here, this is the one that's gonna be sitting just south of the original tank that was built nineteen seventy-five. This tank will increase the storage capacity of the West Water Treatment Plant by two million gallons, so we'll have a total of four million gallons there on site. This tank will also serve the water distribution in both the Zone One and the Zone Two through the pumping of the of the water treatment plant. The other thing that's real important on this tank is just keep in mind that this tank helps with the filter backwash sequence there at the West Water Treatment Plant. It's one of the driving factors that was issued in our master plan in two thousand twenty-two that when that tank that we have right now, when that can, when that water usage is extremely high, we can't get the head that's required in that current tank to effectively backwash the filters at the West Plant. This additional tank will help us with that. So on February twenty-ninth, we received two bids. We received D N N Tank, they came in at three million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And then preload tanks, they came in at four million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So we did not, part of the contract, we did have a a steel bid alternate. We did not receive a steel bid alternate on this project, just these two concrete ramp, wrapped tanks. In our CIP, our current CIP, we had roughly about four million dollars set aside for the construction cost of this tank. And as you can see, the low bidder came in well below that. So our engineer, Black and Beach, and the city staff recommends to award the contract to D N Tank for the, for the total of three million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Any questions?
I just have one question. So it is, looks like it's gonna span about a two-year project. Any, any thoughts on that contract or discussion with the company that submitted it on?
Yes, they actually recommended that contract be extended out just for their scheduling of the construction to get a really competitive bid. They rec, they, they asked us if we can extend our completion date into October of two thousand twenty-five. That way there, they can come on site and be there at a six-month period to complete the task of the construction. If we came in the fall of this year, they, they, it's not normal for them to demobilize and then come back again. Most of the time when these tanks go up, it start to finish about a six-month process.
We can't let you off too easy, but lifespan?
Lifespan, about a hundred years. They got a really good track record on these tanks, seventy-five to a hundred years is kinda, they're, they're pretty confident in a hundred years being constructed and lasting that year.
And this one's manufactured different than our other one, correct?
That is correct. This one here is that concrete tank, so it'll go up in panels. And then they have a steel band that wraps around the outside of this tank, puts stress on that tank. And then they hit it with a shockcrete on the outside for that protection. Maintenance-wise, basically, once it's up, a little bit of inspections off and on in the interior, but there's no exterior painting required on it, and there's no interior painting required like you would on a steel tank.
What's that, what does that run usually on those steel tanks?
What's that?
The maintenance on a steel tank, the difference, what you're saving?
Well, on a steel tank, you have roughly about every ten years, you gotta go ahead and paint the exterior. Uh interiors probably on a twenty-year rotation. The exterior painting on the two million gallon tank that we just got completed a couple of years ago was, was around that four hundred thousand dollars. Because when they go and they paint the exterior and they bring it all down to bare metal, go back and they prime it, and then they have to go ahead and put the required mills of paint on there, so. It'll, it's a pretty good cost to even go to the concrete.
Chad, how far does this bring our current usage into into the future, like?
So this tank will, this is the first phase of our projects that we're looking at there. Right now, this will bring us closer to that twenty forty. You'll see over the next few months, we're gonna bring a couple more projects to you. One's gonna be the West Water Treatment Plant. That's gonna be some pump upgrades, some plant upgrades to help meet the the demand of the well field. And then also the well field will have a collector well coming in for your guys' review. Once we get all three of these projects completed, we're looking at twenty twenty-four, or excuse me, twenty forty meeting our demand. And that's current projections. Now, if we have some large industries that come in and stuff, of course, there's some reevaluation that we have to look at. But the current population growth and the current demand set forth by our water sewer master plan, we should be easily to meet that twenty forty timeframe.
And this is something our master plan is has recommended, or is asking us to do?
Yes, yes, this is a recommendation of the master plan.
And that was done by Black and Beach too?
That is correct.
Chad, will this make any interruptions to our existing tanks or process we have going on there?
No, 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 this one here will be built on the the south side of the current one. So there would be no changes in the production of water during the summer, nothing like that. So this tank will be separate, and then once it's up, tested, certified, we'll just open the valves that interconnect them and we'll be, so there won't be no disruption in water production, no, nothing on that sort.
Thank you.
When these tanks go for maintenance, I know it's few and far, far between, I think you said about ten years. How long does that usually take when they take down maintenance? And the reason why I'm asking, as we move forward and have that extra demand, could that cause a problem with usage with taking those tanks down for any, I'm out of time?
So, so what's the advantage of having the two tanks out there is, is when we do have a maintenance option to look at in inspection or, and maybe some repairs? We'll be able to isolate both tanks, so we'll still be able to maintain, operate the treatment plant and still meet the demands. A lot of times those inspections are gonna be done in the, in the spring or the fall where we're not in our heavy pumpage. So, so it won't affect us with lawn irrigations and system usages, so. So, but the two-tank dual is redundancy. That's another key factor that comes into this plan here, is the fact that we can take one out of service and still continue with water quality in town.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, council, or comments, public comments? Okay. Hearing nothing, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item twenty-two would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-two amending section twenty-four dash one six four of the city code to restrict parking on the north and northeast side of Sunrise, Sunrise Drive from North Victory Road west, continuing around the curved roadway to the northwest end of the street.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-eight seventy-two amending section twenty-four dash one six four.
Second.
Motion second. Chief Don Miller to give some background on this. Chief.
Oh, Mayor and Council. Pardon my voice, I'm struggling a little bit today. The organs you have in front of you is for Sunrise Drive, this is the, basically. The organs you have in front of you is for Sunrise Drive. This is the basically the main road going into the Legacy Bend development. And as the development has grown over the years, the traffic on this roadway has substantially increased. With this being the main way into the roadway, the the initial part where you come into is what's been developed with some residential homes. And with parking on both sides of the street, that's created problems with snow removal, emergency response. And parking issues getting in and out of there because it's so, it's so heavily traveled. We've received some requests to limit the parking. City staff looked at it, both engineers and the police department. We also took it to subcommittee. And the resolution that we have is to restrict parking on the north side. Along there, all the way from Victory Road where you entrance all the way north till to the dead end. And the reason we selected the north side is that the wind blows from the north and if there's cars there, then that would collect snow in the street. And also as the road curves, the roads, the parked cars on the curb would restrict visibility going around the curve. So those are two good reasons why we chose to restrict it on the north and leave it on the south. I sent letters to the residents. I received a couple of responses in support of the parking. There's also their concerns that they've addressed. One of them they brought up to me is speeding. Had not received complaints on that previously, so that's something that we'll focus on. In the future to address the speeding concerns that are along that roadway as well. But this, this is for the parking along the north side and it as the road curves, it's north and northeast side as the road curves. You have any questions?
Don, I, I do have maybe not a question, but more of a comment. That is a concern of a few of the neighbors that had reached out is if we, if we. No longer have parking on the south side of the street, then we will increase the the amount of speed. I know from a string of emails that you and I have had is that educate, I mean, and I mentioned one, I mentioned this to one of them earlier today is that. Possibly putting our, our trailer out that says caution your speed or with speed limited in this area is twenty-five. It's also been from one of the concerned is to lower the speed limit through that residential areas. That is the only way in and way out for all apartment buildings and residential homes.
Right, that was suggested. The speed limit is currently twenty-five, which is, which is the standard speed limit for residential areas. I don't believe lowering the speed limit to say twenty would effectively change the speeders. If they're speeding, they're speeding. So my focus would be to utilize. Our education and enforcement to get people to slow down. And as that gets developed, you know, that will, that will in itself slow traffic down. Right now it's kind of open. So people tend to speed when it's in an open area. So that, that's going to be on us to focus on controlling those speeds as we do that.
I guess one of the other suggestions, and then I see that one of the people that had a concern about us doing, doing the parking on one side. And I couldn't agree with them more. And Steve, this is probably a question for you, but. What about the, what about having a gap paving between Sunrise and Macintosh Road? I think that would alleviate a ton of traffic off of, off the residential homes that go back to the apartments for those residents that live in the apartments.
And Steve can comment on that too. And I think everybody agrees that more than one entrance would be preferred. But that's a little bit longer term solution that needs to be addressed versus this is more of a shorter term solution to get us started.
Well, I get it. I get it. This is a work in progress and this is the first step, but I'm just saying is that if we could have one more entrance and exit, it would alleviate. Some of this, some of this issue of of the congestion on both sides of the parking on both sides of the street.
Absolutely.
I do have an image if we wanted to bring it up, just shows where we're talking about parking on that, I don't know, Valor, Valor Brandon. No, I look for an email that you would receive from me about mid-afternoon. And and I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that. So a couple of things in terms of the speed. One of the things that we've been visiting about with the developer, actually since they initially did the paving. And we recognize that that was potentially going to develop into a speeding issue. The developers talked about those speed tables like we put out on Prospect from between twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh. We have three speed tables out there. So we, they've talked to me about, you know, could we add speed tables out here? I've, I've indicated that I would support that. Most recently, as a function of this conversation, I did reach out to have a conversation about what their plan was for connecting into. Oh, what is that road again, Don?
Macintosh, I believe.
Macintosh, Macintosh Drive there. That is the next intended piece of construction. Due to to the slowdown, on this image, the red line would indicate where the proposed no parking is. Due to the slowdown in development, they believe at least right now, the plan would be. According to one of the engineers was two years before we would see that connection to Macintosh Road. I did start to have a conversation as to whether or not we could do that sooner. And so he is taking that back to the owner for some conversation. I know Seth is here as well. The local office for Olson's, he may have some other comments on that as well. But again, just, just today I have started a conversation on how fast could we get. That connection into Macintosh Drive in place and could it happen this fall? And so those are some of the conversations that are, are have started.
So is this a, in the development plan there for the, for the streets? What was the anticipated time to have, to have streets completed between Macintosh from the original conception of of this plan here?
I don't specifically recall. I would have to go back and look at either the redevelopment agreement for phase one. It was structured in multiple phases. I would say probably originally thinking over a five-year program at the earliest. Just depending on how property is developed and sold. I don't know, Seth, if you have any more information on that, that's, that's going back a bit.
Was, was this a project that was, this redevelopment that was used for, that TIF was used on?
I believe TIF was used on this. We've used TIF and we've used paving districts, water sewer districts as well.
So what ground do we have or what, where can we stand to move this, to move this forward to connect Sunrise and Macintosh together?
I, I mean, I, it's a, like I said.
I'd like to see it escalated because I was sat there yesterday and I seen, I seen what these people's concerns are.
Absolutely. I absolutely agree with that. Again, I, I've reached out this afternoon after reading the, the email chain just to, to start that conversation and see how fast we could make that happen. Fast being could we get it done, get this, this calendar year or late summer or fall? Obviously, there'd need to be design. There's water and sewer. It's not just street. We'd need to get the water and sewer extended underneath the street as well. So I mean, I can report back on that at another, at another meeting. I did in conversation with, with Olson today representing the developer. The developer did not feel that the local management there was necessarily reflecting the information. That the developer would prefer. They asked if we could, would it be possible to table this so the developer. Could be here to address some of those issues or concerns as well.
What, what part are we tabling? Because this is for parking on one side of the street.
Correct. That was the ask from the developer. I'm just relaying that today that they asked, could, could that be delayed a month to allow them to. Be here for the conversation.
I want to add some questions to that and I think. I thought about tabling it also and I, I think there's no parking on one side obviously helps out some concerns, but it also. Ends up with other concerns, right? No parking on one side, I think, helps traffic go through, through there even faster. Through that short area from David Street to, to Victory Road is the worst congestion because that's where the houses are right now.
Right.
Before that or or after that to the west, there is no doubt it is a, let's see how fast we can go. It's fifty, sixty mile an hour, no doubt about it.
And that was the biggest, the biggest concern of the developer to get rid of the parking was the potential even increase in speed.
I think it does and I think that's where my concern is of, of making no parking there. I don't think that necessarily helps. It helps congestion down there of people trying to back out of their driveway. But I also have, and there's probably residents here that.
Why not just have the no parking where the, when that, when you get out of the residential part where the R ones at and you get where the houses haven't been put in yet? That way the people that live in that first row, that first entryway, I mean, now you got to park on one side of this, yeah, you've got just those houses developed. Why don't you start your no parking right after those houses? And then you can start, once, once the developer comes in and starts building house and they kind of locate down, they can just start putting the parking back.
Well, I'm.
Because I think.
Because I think they're still going to go through there pretty fast.
When you live in a neighborhood and you can't park in front of your house, you go park for your neighbor's house, you're going to cause a lot of issues with people.
Right. And, and hopefully there's some residents here that'll come up and talk and, and we can make a better judgment. But my thought, looking at this picture right here of where it is, the road that's, that's unnamed. I'm not sure if I have a name on mine.
It's like.
That curves back up towards East Maple there, Victory Road and East Maple. I think that might even be called East Maple. Right, correct, right there. If, if I'm thinking correctly. A majority of phase two looks to be completed, but the road for phase two is not, which is that road. And why wouldn't we make them put that in as this is a TIF project to eliminate this issue? Because that would be the main road that these apartment goers are going to take out, not going down Sunrise in front of residential right now. And on top of that, why isn't, I don't know if that's supposed to be a larger artillery road like East Maple is on the. East side of Victory Road, but if it's not, why not? Something should be a wider road there for traffic. And I know this has nothing to do, sorry, chief, you're stuck up there in the middle of this for, for parking, but this, this whole topic I feel for these people, but. The issue really is, is they didn't complete part of phase two. And I think that, that road going out to Victory Road needs to be done, more so than going north, Corey, or both of them, obviously.
I don't care if we go this route or we go Macintosh, but something needs to be done to relieve the, some of the in and out traffic.
But that's phase two.
You're just going to be talking circles till the developer's here.
Yeah, that's right. And so you've had a request by the developer to table anyway, so when they can be here. So I would recommend that we do that.
But, but if we're worried about tabling and not having, not having parking on one side of the street then. And we know speeding is an issue, then why, then, I mean, we can enforce the issue, we can enforce the speeding issue. And we can still go to one park, parking on one side of the street.
What if the developer comes in here and says, I'm going to finish it this summer or in a few months from now when construction starts, then you've got an ordinance in place.
I know, I know, Maple, I think Maple, the extension of Maple is actually part of phase five. I, I'd have to go back and look, but I think it's part of the phase five to the north. Are, are you looking at phase two, councilman?
It says phase, phase S two B would be that finished part right there. It sounds like two to me.
It's, it's two, two B, but, but you're, you're correct.
Seth, would you happen to know if they're planning on finishing phase two out here to Victory Road?
No, they're, according to the developer today, they're not. The next piece of the phase would be that connection up to Macintosh Road.
If I could, I, I'd like to separate these, these two issues out because regardless, you know, we, yes, there needs to be a conversation about extending those roads. At best, that's going to be, you know, there's going to be a timeframe involved with that. For anybody who's been through that first section, I would hate to try bringing a fire truck through there. I should have had Tim Rogge here, but I, I didn't. That's our only way into those apartment buildings. And if there's people parked on both sides of the road, that's going to be, that could be tight.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah, and it's tight.
I'd like to say they're two different and relevant.
I think public safety for residents and our own city staff comes into play here is exactly what you're, is exactly what you're saying as far as getting back to the, the apartments through with, with fire trucks. So you, yeah, you make a very valid point here is that it's probably not the, not the idea to postpone this. This parking on one side, not the other.
And we can change this tonight, but we can also change it when this development happens or when we get more answers. Change it back at any time. We just need to call it to Don's attention and we can change it back to.
Then you start habits, you know, and then you put them right back in. It's like, well, no, no parking, but now we're allowed parking. No park, I don't know.
I'd like to hear from the residents that live there and their thoughts.
Both you two have gotten people contacting you, right, on this? Many a times. So what, what's the general feel from the people living in that neighborhood that are talking to you? Just what we said, that they understand it, but their, their other concern is the speeding if it, if it is eliminated. I, I, and trust me, I looked over after this came up, driving down through there a few times, looking down that street. It does happen occasionally. There's a lot of vehicles down there, but it isn't all day, every day. It's not that bad, I don't think. Now, trust me, the residents that live there probably think it is, no doubt about it, but it's. What, what, what effect is, is removing it on the north side going to do? Obviously, it's going to help fire trucks. We should have thought of that when we let them build that road first, right? Should have been a main corridor if that's what it was, but is that going to solve the other issue or open up another one? That's what I'd like to just hear from them and just make a better educated decision and it probably will lean towards no parking on one side. And maybe that goes away once there's two other streets in there to get access out of there.
Let's do just that and open up to any public input or comment on this. Thank you, chief.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Seth Langley with Olson. I am here to help represent the developer slash owner. Similar to what Steve said, the owner was just made aware of this today and would like to see, request you guys to table this. Just so that he could, they could be in person here to meet with you guys to come up with solutions of this project and how to move forward on this. There's any questions? Unfortunately, I have not got to work on this project so much, so there, I would, I have little known knowledge about what's going on here. With this project unfortunately, but as far as. The developer, they're willing, from what it sounds like, they're willing to come in and talk with staff and council members to find out what, what kind of solution we can come up with.
Good. Thank you, Seth. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Molly Humphreys and I live in the second house on the north side coming in from Victory. I don't know what the answer is, whether changing parking is going to work or not. Leaving to take my daughter to school in the morning, coming home from work in the evening is a nightmare. By taking that traffic or that parking from the north side, it is just going to open it up to go that much faster. I've seen it. I've experienced it. We live in, and of course, if you got parking on both sides, we also have children in the neighborhood and animals. And it takes one slip, they go out between a vehicle and they get hit. So I understand that. Our homes are larger homes. Our home alone is five bedrooms. When my husband and I got married, we essentially brought three families together. It was me and my children, my husband. And then his parents moved here from Texas. So with all of us, we have six drivers in our home. Everybody had a bedroom, not everybody had a parking spot. So there are times that they would park on the street. Kids were aware, don't block the, there's a fire hydrant. Don't block the fire hydrant at the end of the street. Don't block a mailbox because we want everybody getting their mail. So trying to be thoughtful about all of that. My in-laws are eighty-five and ninety-two. And bless their heart, they still like to get out and go to the library and go to Hy-Vee and go and do these things. I was always terrified that they were going to get hit by a car, you know, smoked by a car backing out. I don't want them parking on the street. I don't, like I said, I don't know what the answer is. We've had rescue at our home several times for my father-in-law and my mother-in-law. With rescue comes fire truck. It's a nightmare. I've seen rescue having to go down to the apartments. I think there was a water break or something like that in one of the apartments a couple of months ago. It's a nightmare. So I, I don't know what the right. So I, I don't know what the right answer is, I'm just saying that if you guys take away parking on the north side, the south side residents are going to be upset by that. I mean, if you've got people coming out of both sides of their vehicles, then that'll, you know, ruin their grass potentially. It's going to open that for just people speeding through there. I mean, some of the people that live in the apartments go the speed limit, they're, you know, they're conscious of that. Some of them are young kids, and they just go flying by and don't care, you know? We've been outside, and neighbors have screamed at people going down, and you get, flip the bird, and it's like, you know, we're trying to buy a home in a nice area, being told that there's going to be another entrance, and it's not happening, so. For the short term, I don't know what to tell you, I just wanted to give you a little bit of insight from where I come from, from a homeowner.
What, what is your feeling on waiting until the developer can be here to maybe talk about finishing entrances and exits versus following through with what's presented before us tonight?
I pulled up whatever was set in 2018, and the redevelopment, I pulled that up as well. That road should have probably already been done, when we're talking about Phase One, Phase Two, and then A, B, C, D, E, F of Phase Two. To me, it's, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to cuss up here, but it's crap. It needs to be done, it should have been done, period. It doesn't matter, you're, that road should have been done before they finish those other apartments at the end. I love the area that we live in, I love the people, I let, you know, love all that, but it should have been done already. There, I mean, again, what if there's, what if there's an accident, or, I mean, what if that one way in was blocked for God knows what reason, and there was an emergency down the street? Then what? We have one way in and one way out. That's, it's ridiculous.
So you'd like to hear from the developer when these approaches and these new entrances and exits would be-
I don't even care what the developer says, it needs to be done, period. It's a safety issue.
So, so one thing, one thing that would be good, this, I think the developer, in the case, by being present, can hear your frustration, and maybe then address the issues within the neighborhood, because I would think, I would think if I had a development, and I was 24 lots sitting empty, I would really not want my development to have people pointing at going, "There's a problem here." Then that, all of a sudden, who's going to want to build theirs and build, take their lots and sell their? So I think the developer, in their best interest, would be to develop a plan to, yeah, right, because you're-
Well, and, you know, I, looking, digging into the developer, and what the developer are going on to develop now is a concern. If you're not going to finish one project, why would, why would you finish a second project? The TIF money, give me a break. I am all about TIF, if it's used correctly, but you've got this TIF money. We bought our home in July, and we just got the reassessment, and it's miraculously, miraculously gained all these thousands of dollars. Now our taxes are going to go up from that, yet their tax is still going to be the same as when it was just blank, like, just, just get it done. Just get it done. I work in advertising, and I can tell you can advertise all you want to, but what, what, what makes, makes it or breaks it is word of mouth.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Molly.
Yeah.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Vaughn. I live at 1206 Sunrise Drive, across the street from Molly, and like her, we have the same concerns. They're, the speeding, if you open up the parking, it's a nightmare. I have two teenage daughters, one is a driver, I'm a delivery driver, so my delivery vehicle, one of my delivery vehicles is at my home. Be happy that the rest of my fleet's not there, and as a homeowner, I should be able to have all my vehicles there, and be able to park them. I have a teenage daughter that drives and is scared to park in the street at most times because of the way they speed through there, but because of the time of day that my husband and I go to work, we have to have our driveway open, so that way we can get in and out. I also have an eight-year-old granddaughter that lives with us, and is petrified to be in our front yard. My mother answers the door, and she's petrified that our dogs are going to run out, and that they're going to get hit. And if you guys put a no parking on Molly's side of the street, they're all going to park on my side, and I'm not going to get my mail, because we've already had that issue. Okay? And my husband's going to be ticked, because my lawn's going to look like crap, you know, because they're parking there. I think there's got to be a better solution. We were made promises when we purchased this home, and those promises have not been kept. We were told that there was going to be a second entrance, because we were very concerned about this. And my mother moved in with us recently, she did live in the apartments back behind there, and that's an even bigger nightmare back there. I mean, they speed. I've been one of the neighbors that have been out there screaming at them to slow down. I've been flipped off, I've been called, all the names that there are to be called. But if it's to protect my family, that's what I'm going to do. So I'm asking that you guys don't put this parking in effect because of the fact that it is going to open it up, and they're just going to speed even more. We have asked for speed bumps, we talked to the apartment complex about a, speed zones down there, and they had a, a sign out there, it was there for, I think, a week, and they said there was no issue. One of our other neighbors is working tonight and can't make it, and he is concerned about this too. But he said, "What are you guys going to do? You guys aren't going to do anything, because we have complained." Because it's not just parking, it's not just speeding, it's an eyesore with the, with all the other things that the developer has not done. I made daily calls this last summer about the, the weeds out of control in Legacy Bend. My husband went and mowed the lot next to us multiple times, because we were embarrassed. I mean, there's bigger problems than just parking that need to be addressed. So I don't, I don't think that it's going to help.
For this in front of us, you would suggest not acting on the parking, parking ban right now, until we have some further conversations about all these other things?
Correct. I think that he needs to be here and address some of his issues, because he's tired of my voice, because we have voiced, voiced concerns to him. Mark will not answer the phone anymore. Because he told us that there was nothing he could do about the speeding and all of that.
So you would like the developer-
To be held accountable. Finish the road that we were promised. Because like I said, when we bought our house, that was our main concern, there's one road in for all of these apartments. That does not help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Deb Dreher. I also live in Legacy Bend. I'm actually going to agree with my neighbors, I don't know that the parking, or the no parking on one side of the street is actually going to help. I do think that the developer should be here, he should be held accountable, he should be answering some of these questions. I also like the idea of the Macintosh Road, because we, when we bought our home, and we bought our home, we moved in in June, and we also were told there would be another street, because obviously, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that's not safe. That is not safe to have that many people coming in and going out one street. We were told there would be two, if not three, streets. And here it is, a year, two years later, and we're still, we're still messing with this one street in and out, and it is a nightmare. And if they said that speeding isn't an issue, I don't know what they were, what time of day they were looking at, but speed is a huge issue, safety is a concern, snow removal is a huge concern, I've seen snow pile up around cars. I don't know what the answer is either, but I do know, I, I do feel like the developer needs to be here and, and answer our questions, because they're really, it, honestly, the development has just stopped. There's been no development there, other than the apartments, but as far as single-family homes, there hasn't been any. So if they were building along there, that East Maple, then I'm sure they would complete that street, but their building has just kind of halted with single-family homes, so. I don't know that I added anything different, but I wanted to come in, also voice my opinion as a homeowner out there, and speed is an issue. I tell you what, sometimes I back out of my driveway and I look five times, because you never know if someone's just going to come down that street, and you're not, you're not going to see them, so. We don't have young kids, thankfully, but I do have a young driver, and I always tell him, "Look three, four, or five times before you back out."
So all you guys are asking is for the, for the approaches, or the ins, ins and outs to be finished?
Yes. I mean, I think that, that would at least help.
That would help.
Because the, it's not the homeowners, I don't think, that are speeding, maybe some of, maybe some of us are, I don't know, but, you know, the, all those apartments, and there's a lot of them, and they're nice, and, you know, they're beautiful, and I'm sure great people live there, don't get me wrong, but I just think there needs to be a way for them to get in and out as well, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, Council. I am Danielle Rossi, I'm the property manager of Legacy Bend Apartments. I'm here on behalf of our owner, who unfortunately could not make it today, he like, I'm sure he told some of you, he just found out that this was occurring a few hours ago, and called me to come speak on his behalf, and just ask you guys to table this discussion until he is able to come here and answer the questions that you guys are asking. I know he does hear these concerns, it's concerns that we ourselves, as the property managers, have voiced as well, and had many discussions with him about. Safety, speeding, the snow removal, is all stuff that we have discussed with him and are trying to address. He would ask that you guys table this, just to give him the opportunity to be here himself, and also continue to research kind of what we can do to help with that, and kind of make that better.
So would you like this brought back on the next council meeting, or what is, what is your timeframe?
He plans on being here for the next town council meeting, at least from what I was told today. He just, unfortunately, with the notice that was given to him, he just was not able to come today.
Okay.
Danielle, it sounds like you've addressed several of these things already with him, but I assume you'll be taking a list of the concerns you heard here tonight to him?
Yes, yes, that is my plan, is to address this with him as well, a lot of the concerns that we have heard, his concerns that, as property managers, we have heard from a lot of the homeowners and spoken to about. We've spoken to many of the tenants about similar concerns, so I think as a whole, we've had all the same concerns as well, just as a whole in that community.
All right. Thank you for coming forward.
I think I'll just add to that. I know Don sent out the letter on the seventh, sound right, Don? And some, some residents didn't get it until maybe a week later, fairly short notice, or wasn't able to maybe come today, or was such short notice, we're out of town, I know some people were, but, so I'm assuming the owner, or at least maybe the property management got that same letter at about the same time, am I thinking right, Don?
I didn't, I, I read what they were, I didn't send them a letter.
Okay, okay, so they, they might have known even ahead of time. So obviously, it's worth tabling and having probably another lengthy discussion next time on where this goes. Parking or no parking, but you go ahead, Mr. Sei.
Okay. I might have a partial solution here.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm Steve Sei.
Thank you.
I lived in Lincoln for 15, 16 years, and I was just in that area today also, and I live north of there. But where Sunrise comes in, off of Victory Road, you come a little bit, you have a little cul-de-sac on the left. Okay, first of all, with the mailboxes, why can't we have the postal service on that corner put a community mailbox? And also, something that I've seen in Lincoln, I think would work, may not make some residents happy, but when you turn that corner, you can go either way, I don't care, but when you turn the corners there, whether it be south or north, have the developer build some parking spots, not on the road, but build them in from the curb, so the cars have to, you know, pull in like that. I've been through that in Lincoln quite a bit. But little walking's good for everybody, you know, the mailbox, and something else you guys need to think about, I don't know if you have talked about it, but at some point, there's going to have to be, I want to call it a fire station annex in East Norfolk. When the Bean plant gets going, and you've got all those train cars coming through Norfolk, and as they're going through Norfolk, if there's ever a fire call, how are they going to get to the east side of Norfolk? So, you something to think about. And I think it's a great idea, what Corey had, extending Macintosh, I'm on Macintosh every day numerous times, I have no problem with that. That'd be a great idea. And, you know, for now, it'd be good for fire department, quick access down there, but I'm all for extending Macintosh, not a problem.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? No, no further public input, Council, decision time. Do I hear a motion one way or another?
I'll make a motion to table the following ordinance of 5872. Second.
Motion second, please vote. Everybody vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5872 is placed on the table.
Right. Item 23 would look for a motion to consider approval of resolution number 2024-14, authorizing the Public Works Director to request the Nebraska Department, Department of Transportation to perform a pedestrian signal study on Highway 81 north of Elm Street.
I make a motion for consideration of approval of resolution number 2024-14.
Second.
Motion second for background on this, Steve Ramis, please.
Mayor and Council, the Department of Transportation is currently working on a project to update signal, our signal systems on Highway 81 and 275. When they met with us, they asked if there was interest in removing the pedestrian signal north of Elm. It was installed many, many years ago, back when there was a public school to the east there of Elm Street. I believe that's recently turned into a daycare center, if I recall. I said, they said in order to do that, they would need a, a resolution, or a letter from the city requesting that they study that intersection, and if it met the conditions, they would go ahead and remove that. So that's the resolution in front of you, requesting that they study that, and if it does meet those, the conditions of the warrant to remove it, then they would go ahead and remove that as part of their, their signal project.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions on this?
Steve, one question. Where would the new crosswalk be down there on Prospect?
The crosswalk would be, yeah, would be Prospect.
That's, that's well, like, like the new train is? Okay.
Yep.
Further questions? Any public comments on this? Okay. Hearing nothing, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2024-14 is adopted.
Item 24 would entertain a motion to consider resolution number 2024-15, adding stop signs to conduct a traffic signal study at the intersections of Fourth Street and Norfolk Avenue, and Fifth Street and Norfolk Avenue, and evaluate the efficiency of four-way stop-controlled
I'll offer consideration, consideration of resolution number 24, 2024-15.
Second.
Motion second, and Steve, once again, some background on this, please.
Couple things driving this study- Couple of things driving this study, council members. Uh, first, following the, the study and the installation of four-way stops at Second and Third, um, those have been in place now for a year and a half or so. Um, we have had outreach from a few businesses downtown, uh, expressing interest that could that, could we look at extending that enhancement, uh, in terms of traffic speeds? It has lowered traffic speeds downtown. It's encouraged some of the higher, the heavier, um, trucking that, that used to go through downtown to, to go to other, use other streets. Um, I think this, the businesses down there, at least the ones that reached out had just expressed a desire to extend some of that traffic calming that that provided, um, as far as Fifth Street. The other one is with the hotel, uh, or the old Kensington Hotel going under reconstruction. There's also a desire, um, to look at, at the four-way stop as a function of that development and also look at the left turn movement for southbound Fourth, uh, in front of the hotel there. So if you approve this, uh, in can, in addition to looking at, uh, begging the signals, uh, installing temporary four-way stop signs and then studying that for a period of ninety to a hundred and twenty days, we would also be, um, studying the impact to traffic if that left turn movement, southbound left turn movement on Fourth was to go away.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? When would the study start, Steve?
Study would start around the first of April. Um, street department has, you know, we just need to be sure we have everything ready to go for that. I think we have some of it, we may not have all of it. Um, we wanted to see, make sure that this went forward before we expensed, uh, some of the remainder of the signage.
So you'd say this is business driven, downtown business driven, not, not, uh, council or city driven then as well?
It is, my, my understanding would be it, uh, in, in my conversations with downtown businesses through DNA or VPD, um, you know, they expressed they'd like to see this extended to Fifth, if that was possible.
Okay.
I think the Kensington piece is probably more from the engineering department, what's possible, what's not possible there in terms of that left turn movement.
So this will catch the tail end of school year and the beginning of the, of the following year, correct?
It would be, it would be important to catch, catch the school as we're studying the traffic impacts downtown, yeah. So we'd want to, we'd wanna see that up as early in April as we could to capture four to six weeks of, of school traffic. I would expect the study would probably be wrapping up prior to school was starting.
Any other questions for Steve?
Steve, can you explain how this study is gonna work? Is there somebody sitting there counting traffic and at both intersections?
We would use technology to do some traffic counts. We have traffic counts, um, that we did about four years ago. Um, there's been enough changes downtown that we would want to study specifically the traffic counts at Fourth, so you would see some cameras go up that are doing the traffic counts there. Um, and then we're using technology that exists in our signal systems that First Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, and Seventh Street to look at traffic movement through the downtown area, specifically traffic speeds, traffic delays.
Steve, so we did this on Second and Third, every intersection is, um, different, of course, but are there conclusions we can draw from having done it in a similar location in terms of traffic speeds impacted, pedestrian safety?
I would, I would expect when you're in that First Street, First Street to, First Street through Third Street, uh, we saw about a three mile an hour reduction in traffic speeds in that corridor section of, of the downtown area. Um, it's also reasonable to think that the traffic that is moving east-west through Third and Second is generally coming, you know, from, from First Street moving through downtown or coming, um, from, um, that Fifth Street, or, or that, that same traffic that's moving through Second and Third is moving through Fourth and Fifth. And if those two intersections are four-way stop, the east-west traffic, uh, at Fourth and Fifth should accommodate the four-way stop, um, with simpler movement. The north-south traffic, uh, we do have a left turn at Riverside or Fourth and Brosh for southbound traffic, we do have a left, a left turn signal there. I, I know there's a reasonable left turn movement there at Fourth and Norfolk. Um, so it's hard, it's hard, it's hard to say, but again, it works at Fourth. Um, I would expect it to work at Norfolk Avenue. The, the signal, the, the study itself will provide the data we need to, you know, tell us whether or not it's functioning.
Okay. Any pub, any public comments on this? Input? Evening.
One quick question.
Can you tell us your name, please?
Excuse me?
Please state your name, for the record, please.
David Janzman.
Thank you.
What about pedestrian safety? Is a four-way stop safer than a light?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
They're gonna respect a pedestrian walking across after a four-way stop?
The four-way stop, the four-way stop gives the pedestrian the right of way, so.
Uh-huh. But who, who honors that? Have you been down there and watched?
In general, in general, it, it's honored fairly well. Uh, I'm not gonna say it's honored all the time.
How long have the street lights been down there?
How long have they been down now?
Yeah.
About a year, year and a half?
Street lights.
Oh, the street lights, not the signals?
No. Probably fifty years. And it works because when it says walk, you can walk. When they're stopped at the four-way stop sign and you start, they go.
Right. So the blind community prefers the four-way stop?
So do old people and so do young kids.
Right.
And also the one on Second or whatever is hid behind a tree. You really can't even see that stop sign when you're going west.
But.
Think about safety of pedestrians and citizens first, before taking street lights out, that function and work and people trying to get across. Trust me, I've seen it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
I, I was just gonna add, I was gonna tell Dave, but he, obviously he can hear it from here. Um, when we, when we did do that on Second and Third Street, we had that same question come up and I'll be honest, I was on that same side of things of wanting to keep the lights. I think I voted no on it actually, on, on the stop signs. And, uh, and we did have a member of the community here that was legally blind discussing that and, and probably, I don't know if he swayed anybody's vote, but he gave us a good input on, on handicap trying to navigate those. And he did say the, the blind would prefer stop signs over stoplights. And, and I'm not, I mean, it's on record, but it, it's very true, exactly what happened in that meeting.
And I, if I remember right, I think part of that was, uh, they know then they have the right of way all the time, right? They're not relying on a, uh, audible crosswalk signal that may or may not be working or functioning correctly.
That, that's a hundred percent correct. And the other topic that was brought up on that same thing was that different audible singles, signals throughout the town need to be the same. And I know we still have to address that.
Welcome, sir.
Oh, welcome. My name's Russ Mateo and my concern with the stop signs, um, I pick up grandkids from junior high and I take them and I go to senior high and pick up another grandchild up there. That even the stop sign on Fourth and Brosh, I will be backed up as, as, at least to fill up sometimes, going, trying to go north on Fourth Street there. Um, I just see more congestion happening with the stop signs like that. Um, it's not so much a safety thing, it's a time factor. I mean, I don't know how many people go through those intersections during the time of day, but even going east, east and west sometimes on Norfolk Avenue, you'll be backed up before First Street there to get through Second and Third Street. I think the stop signs cause more traffic slowdowns than the signal light. Well, you don't get the flow that you would with just using regular signal lights and crossing walks for pedestrians with the audible. And, you know, like Dave Janz, Janice Asman just said, it's safety thing with the crosswalks. People see a walk sign, they can walk. If it says don't walk, they don't walk. A stop sign, like you say. And some stop signs are hard to see going west on Norfolk Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this?
Hi, I'm Olivia Mateo. Um, um, as a pedestrian, I would prefer to have a stop, uh, a traffic light in there. Um, I have tried to cross and, um, you have such a long way, you have a hard time finding, um, looking at the, uh, the stop signs. So how are you gonna see me? If, if the, you know, cars can't see the stop signs, how are you gonna see me trying to cross? I, I've had to wait until everybody's gone and then I'll go because I can go one side, the other side don't see me. You have way too many things in the road that you cannot see clearly. And, um, I'm, you know, I support the businesses in there and it's, it's nice and dandy, you know, I mean, I love the downtown vibe, but having traffic all the way down the street, trying to get through the middle of Norfolk so that you can get to the other side, that, that does not, um, help your other citizens on a daily basis. So instead of changing the, um, traffic light to stop signs, why don't you like, maybe on the weekends or something, make it a flashing stoplight so that, you know, that's when your majority of people come walking through downtown and that's when you have your events, you know, so that's when you wanna slow down the traffic. Okay. Um, it would be nice to actually also have, I don't know if they can support it, but cops directing traffic or, you know, in your major blockage areas during school time so that, you know, traffic's going. Doing that stop sign is gonna cause major traffic away from your, um, you know, your main street and every, you, a lot of people in the morning trying to go to work, you know, you have the, the Second and Third and the Fourth and Fifth, you're just gonna create bottleneck in the morning, at noon, uh, you know, during school time, I mean, school getting off, it's, 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 it's really not conducive, especially for Fourth Street because Fourth Street is, is a main thoroughfare for the junior high and, and, um, high school. So if you have people trying to get through things, you know, it's just, and like I said, I, I, I understand the, blind can't see the stop signs, but, you know, um, if you can't, if the driver can't see the stop sign, how would you see this blind person walking through and actually giving the right of way? Because I've had that problem. I'm short, I'm small, usually I wear black, so, you know, I mean, it's just, maybe you should consider putting the stop signs in the legacy bin. That sounds like a, a more appropriate, um, study to do, you know, because you have, I don't understand why they didn't make another, another road when you built apartment buildings. I mean, that's just, I think that should be where you should focus on issue because right now I don't think there's anything wrong with the, what we have in downtown.
Thank you.
I think we could look at stop signs here, it's probably not a bad, bad thought for legacy bend, but keep, keep in mind, see, keep, but keep in mind, this is just a study, it's not a permanent, for stop signs right now, but a study, but obviously we'd like to hear concerns, so, yeah. Maybe we do need stop signs in legacy bend.
Uh, my name is Tim Ernst and, uh, just been listening to things going on here. And, uh, one thing that's never mentioned, how does that stop sign gonna tell a person that's sight impaired to go? Is it gonna have a beeper on it that says you can go now?
No. I don't, I don't have the exact details on that. I'd be, I'd be happy to visit with the blind community and, and get that information. They generally use hearing and so they know when traffic is moving and not moving. I mean, a lot of blind aren't, you know, absolutely black blind, they can still see some image and something's moving. Um, but it, it's, it's a sound cue for them, I would say more than anything, that the traffic is not moving. They also just know, they, they come to know that that is a stop controlled intersection and they know that they have the right of way there as well.
They know, but do the cars know?
Tim, actually, 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 when we studied Second and Third Street, actually the individual that was, um, vision impaired, he actually had a, had a dog and the dog knew when there was no traffic. So he had, so he had a service dog that would, that would guide him through the intersection.
Not, uh, not all have their puppy dogs. I know, uh, you know, Dick Clyde has one and his dog is very, very intelligent.
And that's actually who spoke to us.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, and another thing, question I have is, uh, when you drive through downtown, which I do quite a, quite often, just be, like, and nothing else to do, I would like to know why the handicap parking places, there's one on each end of the street, instead of putting them in the middle of the street? In the middle of the block, I mean, in the middle of the block.
So right now we don't have ADA access to the sidewalk in the middle of the block. The ADA access is at the corners. So that's why the, that's why the ADA parking is at the corners.
So we fix everything else, why don't we fix it?
We're working on it.
This week, next week, three years from now, four years from now?
It takes a lot more thought than just going and throwing in a curb to jump over the, over the curb or a ramp to jump the curb. There's storm, there's storm drainage to take into consideration as well.
We've also applied for a grant to, for funding to pay for it.
And I guess while we're on that subject too, uh, I would, uh, challenge all you guys in the council to, uh, drive in the West Lane, South on Thirteenth Street where someone supposedly fixed it so it's smoother and it's worse than what it was before. And I know that process was not free. So I think, I challenge you all to drive down that street and while you're driving down there, you think how many people from out of town and stuff drive through there? And you're so concerned about images and stuff like that, think what kinda image that puts forth for the city.
So there is, I'm not exactly sure where you're on. Are you north or south of Pazwa?
Steve, I'm just gonna say, we're gonna stay on the stop sign issue for now. We do have a public comment period, but, um, I, I would add that, you can finish your thought on Thirteenth Street. Eighty-one is a state highway reconstruction pro, program that we're having many, multiple conversations with them on, uh, initiating.
There is a, there is a mill and overlay project, two of them right now scheduled through the Department of Transportation for Highway eighty-one that would occur in the next, one next year and one the following year. We're working to try and get those advanced to get it all done at the same time, but. So part of the, part of the answer is, is right now we're out there patching and I realize, you know, sometimes patching can be rough, but we know there's a bigger, a bigger mill and overlay coming in through the DOT.
Understatement, though, it's rough.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on the stop sign study issue? Any other discussion, council, on this? I will say, having gone through the earlier discussions on Second and Third, um, there are a lot of the same questions, they're understandable, but when you're moving or changing from signalized intersections to stop signs, but we do have the benefit of, uh, seeing outcomes from that. I do think it is accurate to say that there has been a traffic calming effect, slower speeds. I, I think pedestrian safety has been improved. Um, I think it's a quieter environment in downtown with, without, um, engines revving up to meet green lights consecutively. And I do think it is, um, actually safer for the, for the disabled and the handicapped to travel downtown with those. to travel downtown with those four-way stops in which they perpetually have the right of way. So that's all I'll add. Any other discussions or comments on this study? And as Councilman Grantquist said before, this is just a study. This is not a permanent change that we make. Well, one fell swoop.
Steve, so along those lines, you're talking sixty, ninety days? What time, what kind of timeframe do we expect this?
Ninety. So the last one we did was six months. This, uh, this one, we won't run six months. Ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
Ninety to one twenty?
Yeah.
And?
And I, and I, I'm hopeful ninety, and, you know, we can get the data we need to come back.
I, I would agree with the comment earlier, though, too, that I, I think a real emphasis needs to be put on Fourth Street. Uh, I think it does connect those schools, and I think that needs to probably be watched very closely.
Yeah. It's... I agree. I agree.
I'll say right now, um, on Fourth Street, heading south, and you wanna head east off Fourth Street during school times, you cannot head east with that stoplight. So it's not a perfect situation with the stoplight either. Um, my biggest concern with the downtown getting rid of the stoplights is the time it buys people. The stoplights now buy time to back out of your spot. So you have more time to back out versus, what, a stop sign? You'll have a car, a stop sign, then they're gonna be right there pretty soon. Other than that, I love the stop signs from the, the aspect, it gives, legally, state statute, it gives the pedestrian the right of way every time. Whether a citizen wants to adhere to the law is on them, um, but it does get them the right of way. The car is not in the right to go when pedestrian's at that street sync. With a stoplights, when it's a walk or a stop, people do not listen to that. When it says, "Don't walk," and it's clear, they walk across. And so they're not adhering to the stop, the stoplights down there, as far as whether to walk or, or go. So what I do like about it is, it slows cars down, it gives the pedestrians the right of way. But with Fourth Street, that is, that's, we gotta see if this thing will work, because I don't know.
I don't wanna belabor the point. We've had a full discussion on this, but I would be interested in Chief Miller's thoughts on this, just to have a traffic, um, perspective on what you've seen at Second and Third, and the impacts of four-way stops versus the signals on Norfolk Avenue.
I'll, I'll put myself in the same camp with several others when we first started looking at Second and Third. Um, I was, on the, the naysaying side, I wasn't a real fan of it. Once it was in place, it works really, really well. Um, and I would be very interested in seeing the study to see how it works. We don't know until we study it. And I, you know, Fourth, I have some questions on because of the dynamics of that, but we won't know until we study it. And so I'm, I'm interested in proceeding with the study. Uh, I think it's gonna work well. Uh, the stop signs, for example, Fourth and Brash is another one. Um, I was convinced that that wasn't gonna work, but it has worked well. Um, and actually handles the traffic better than when we had a light.
Good. Thank you, Chief. Okay, any other comments or questions, council, before we vote? Okay. Hearing nothing else, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen is adopted.
Item twenty-five, a motion to consider approval of a testing services contract with Certified Testing Services Incorporated for the Johnson Park Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll offer for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion second. And then, uh, Steve, I think we'll hear from you on this.
Mayor and council, we currently have a contract with this Certified Testing Services for concrete testing, earth density testing, uh, in the lower part of Johnson Park, uh, the lower trails and, and bridges and so forth. This is for the upper part, the, the play area, the trails in the play area, uh, the foundations for the amphitheater, um, the, um, the sports courts, and then all, so all that's activity that's up there in that north corner, this is a budgeted, these are budgeted dollars, uh, within the project. Um, and this would just be another contract there, but these are, these are the, you know, these tests are what, part of what we take in when we're inspecting the projects to make sure that they're getting constructed according to the specifications and plans that are in place and that they're putting bids against. And this is how we verify that.
Any questions on that? Comments, public comments? Hearing none, please vote. We have a glitch in the system. Do you wanna read the votes?
Yep. Just, you can just re-vote, please.
Vote again?
Yep. Let's try it again. All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes the regular agenda, uh, of the city council meeting. We do have public comment period, uh, this evening. So at this point, um, a member of the public can come forward and comment on any, uh, relevant city issue on their mind.
Sorry. Hi, I, I, I just have another question with the, um, the, um, plan that was submitted earlier this evening. Um, I'm a little bit confused. It's like, I, I, I do appreciate all the questions that you asked. Um, is it right to assume that, um, you're not gonna present this to the public? You're just gonna decide that this half-cent, um, increase is gonna be going or not?
No.
Without the public, um, input on it?
Public will have to decide if it happens or not.
So, I mean, so are you gonna, just like you did the last time, where you actually had, um, public venues, where the public can come and look at your plans? Is that what's gonna happen to this thing?
The, the process would be, if, if the council deliberates on what the Citizens Committee, uh, proposed tonight, uh, for the police station, um, they, they would have to vote as a council to put it on the ballot in November. And that would have to be done before August. But in the meantime, um, I would imagine there would be public input sessions, like, uh, like there have been on, uh, previous initiatives, uh, both during that time, pre-August and post-August, yeah.
So, um, that last iteration that we went through last year, um, the beginning of the, um, there's, I, I think there's a certain period of time that you presented to the public, and the public, you know, can say, "Oh, yeah, that's great," or not, whatever. Um, that started well before the public knew what was happening. So are we starting that time now? Or did it start like six months ago, and now, um, the public's kinda like behind on this information?
Well, from?
Because the last time, when we had four different, um, options, or not options, one whole po- package, when it was presented at the library, um, that was the first time that the community learned about that big package. But it was, it was, um, provided that it, it was already put out in January, because you've had all these meetings with the council, the committees, whatever, you know, maybe the schools, I don't know, you know, that it, it was already way back in January, and the, um, the community is just, you know, getting it that first day in, in the library. And that was like eight months after you guys all started doing planning.
I don't, I don't know that I have your answer for you, but the, Troy coming forward and presenting that was probably the first time we all, I, I would assume, and maybe some of us didn't even hear it before that. Um, just depended who might have reached out to the committee and asked, "Hey, how's it going? And what's this look like?" Uh, so I would foresee, obviously, we have till August to put it on the ballot, I would foresee there would be public input sessions, just like what we had back then. But there's nothing going on ahead of time. This committee met together and, and came up with a recommendation. And from there, obviously, they had some input from, I don't know if they really got much from me, but they, they had citizen input, um, probably some staff input. And I would think this is gonna go in front of, the plans were already done, nothing's really changing on the police station, I don't believe. There wasn't any proposal of changing the plans for the police station. But it doesn't hurt to show what those plans look like, what the anticipated costs were, maybe a better outline of what their thoughts were or what came up in a subcommittee. So I think there's nothing preconceived of what's going on, if that's kind of the thought. Um, I would assume everything's just gonna be out in public to show what would be on the ballot if it got to the ballot. And I think that's the recommendation of putting on a ballot with a certain type of funding.
So, um, the plan that you guys have in front of you, because I, I only know what, what was in the, written up in the, um, agenda. Um, the plan that was in front of you, um, is there any other courses of action besides the half-cent sale increase?
What you, what you saw is what we've seen.
Okay. So like, you know, it's like, okay, that's one option, which was presented last, oh, no, the last time, okay? Um, how about, because we don't have enough money, you know, um, and we have all these buildings that are, um, empty? And I think somebody said something about, oh, maybe, you know, once we develop the, the crush plant and all the stuff, you'll have a, um, a fire station, you know, little, um, section over there. Have, have we looked at, um, maybe putting, uh, se- not separating the police department, but having another station in a different location in one of those empty buildings that, um, is not being used and just sitting empty? You know, I'm thinking like the old VA location next to the, um, the Army, Navy, Marine Corps recruiting place, you know, have a little station there. Um, I don't know what the issues are. I know that there's not enough room in a police station, but I, I don't know the specifics of, is it just space? Or is it, um, maybe you need to put the juvenile section in a separate place than the normal police station? Maybe a separate place for the training? I don't know. That's the kind of detail I would like to see when you present it to the community, you know, courses of action, you know, we've looked at the half-cent sale, we've looked at, um, a separate, you know, secondary location. Um, how about moving the, sorry, city attorney to a different, um, place? I'm, I think there, you know, I don't know how big of a space they are taking in the police station. But, you know, I would like, as a citizen, as a commu-, you know, um, I would like to see that kind of detail when presented to the community, so that we know that you've looked at different things, you've brainstormed the cost that it's gonna happen, instead of just telling us, "We need half-cent increase sale." That's it. You know, I wanna see that you guys actually looked at other possibilities. And, and with dollars attached to it, so that I can see that, well, with a half-cent sale, this is what we're gonna get, with, you know, doing this, you know, reconfiguring a different location with all the, you know, the furniture, the, you know, locks or whatever that they need to do, this is what it's gonna cost, you know? I mean, something like that, to give the community that you actually looked at, um, financial, um, options, that'd be wonderful. And, um, we would like it before, you know?
Thank you, Olivia. I think, I think we understand, yeah, your point there. Um, the, the committee that was put together, uh, was, uh,
Oh, I'm glad to take that.
Was, was pulled together la- even last fall, before the end of last year. And they were tasked with studying, uh, uh, different options. So they came forward, as Councilman Grantquist said, with their recommendation tonight.
Well, and I, I would think that they-
But that won't, that won't be the end of the discussion. There will be other discussions that the council has, that citizens, uh, can have with the council about other ideas on, on potential solutions.
And I would recommend not attaching the street thing, bond, whatever, because that, that just confused me, you know? Focus on the police station.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna, Troy Larrick, again, I just wanna clarify a little bit, just to, um, so all we did was propose a recommendation. So the group, a group of many of us had never worked together on projects. A lot of us had never met each other even before we did that. So with, with a different background of, of folks with, with different interests and different involvements, um, we came together and we, our, our, our goal wasn't to tell the council or the city what to do, to just make a recommendation on what could be done, how we could solve this problem. And you guys, if you don't know about the police department, I would go to one of Chief's presentations. It's very eye-opening. It is, uh, it is, it's, it's a, it's amazing that they're doing what they're doing, but it is not a, we, it's not a need, we have to fix this, or in two or three years, we're gonna have a problem that we, that we don't wanna do, so, that we don't wanna have. Um, so likewise, everything we're doing, everything we proposed was, uh, would have to be voted, voted on, on the ballot. So what these guys would do, if they forwarded it, it would just go on the, on the November ballot, would have to be voted by the people. So our goal was to try to take as much political, uh, politics out of it and, and isolate the problem, and come up with a solution that makes sense and was fiscally responsible. And I feel like that we did that. If we studied the plan in general, I think we did a good job with that. I think we did something that I think the police, that would, are, these guys, his, Chief Miller's guys put their lives on the line to keep us safe. We owe them more than they have right now. And so that's my input on, just to clarify a little bit on kinda what we, how we came to what we do. We really weren't pressured by anybody. We were given all the facts and everything, and everything was laid out. We made our own determinations. I don't think, probably from a city standpoint, our determinations were the favored determinations. But I feel like we did it in good faith, and it's a good plan, so, but thank you.
Hey, Troy.
Thank you, Troy.
Troy, just for, um, for the public to understand, who was, can you name who was all on your committee? In case they have questions a little bit deeper?
Raise hands, but I can, I can do it from a public record. Um, we're all, I think everyone, Pat Carney, and Myra Mendoza, Scott Williams, Brad, Brad Brooks, Pastor Ty, um, uh, Mary, I know it, Mary Kopeck, and Shane Wyden are all part of the group, along with, uh, support from the city and myself. Again, I've never worked with these guys. They're all great people. All came with, with independent thoughts and, and really looked at this thing. We spent a lot of time of our personal time, I didn't really, wasn't doing cartwheels, be involved in the process, to be honest, but I'm kinda glad I was in the end, because it is a problem. When I toured the police station personally, it really magnified the, the problem, or the potential problem that we're facing. So that's, that's, so.
So what you presented tonight, anyone, anybody on the, on the review panel could answer any of the questions that such individuals would have?
Sure.
Yeah. That's why I asked for the, who was all on it?
Right.
Thank you.
Jim McKenzie, um, I'm responding to the city staff letter to the editor, which was in response to my February fifteenth letter to the editor regarding downtown ambiance lighting. Even though staff signed, some staff signed the letter, it appears that much of it was written by Josh, from the information I received from a public records request. The response completely misses the mark. At the heart of my letter was the fact that there's a significant lack of transparency on so many levels of government. The agenda item for the ambiance lighting did not contain any information about the cost of the project, detailed budget, or any details about the amount of any city funds which may be anticipated to be used on the project. Had I not asked for the agenda item to be removed from the consent agenda, so that it could be discussed, it seems the city council, unless you've previously been notified outside of a public meeting what was in there, nor the public would have any idea what was in the project. From a public records request, I found the total proposed cost of the project is two-point-seven million dollars. Some of this appears to be Johnson's Park planned improvements, and some appears to be downtown lighting, including two-hundred-eighty-nine thousand dollars of structures, which I assume are to support the downtown lighting, and six-hundred-and-fifty-seven- the downtown lighting, and $657,000 of trail lighting. Is that all inside Johnson's Park? Is some of it downtown? Again, it's impossible to tell due to a lack of transparency. And what about the operation and the cost of operation, the planned maintenance of this lighting? Who will be responsible for this? Will it be the city, the taxpayers? And what is the planned operational and maintenance budget? Again, none of this has been discussed. Which leads me to the next subject on transparency. On March, on the March 4th city council meeting, there was discussion on an extremely blighted determination study for property located at First Norfolk Avenue. Providing this blighting designation would allow the property to qualify for 20 years of TIF, tax increment financing benefits. It could be reasonably assumed that the more TIF a property is eligible to qualify for, the greater the value of the property to the selling entity. According to the records I accessed from the Nebraska Secretary of State's office, Josh Mooney and Andrew Colvin are listed as directors for the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation. I believe this is the same organization that owns the property that was the subject matter of the extremely blighted determination study. So the question is, are the mayor and city administrator indeed directors for the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation? If so, it seems to me that they would have been required to declare their conflict of interest, recuse themselves from the discussion, leave the dais, and turn a discussion over to the council president and council members. This did not happen. They both participated in the blight and TIF discussion. Similarly, they should have not participated in any non-public subcommittee meetings on this issue, if they occurred, nor tried to influence other council persons. This question needs an answer. Any director of a corporation has a fiduciary responsibility to the corporation and must act in the best interest of the corporation. The Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation is not subject open meeting laws, public records laws, or other laws that require transparency like city government is. They can spend their funds any way they see fit without any citizen oversight. Openness and transparency in city government must be a constant priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Andy, we'll address a couple of those things, because I think they need to be on the record. Andy and I are members of the Economic Development Foundation, and Andy, can you speak to why that is, and historically, why city officials have been part of that foundation?
Sure. Well, I'm an ex-official member, and so the foundation has existed for a long time, probably 40, 50, 60 years, is how long it's existed in this community. And if I remember correctly, I believe one of the original members of that most likely was Warren Cook, Mayor Warren Cook. If I remember some of the anecdotal history of that board. So I don't know if the mayor has been a consistent member for all these years, I would not know that, but I believe that is the case, as a voting board member, as is a county commissioner as well. And I think that's on there so the city can have some type of input or partnership as they're going through their projects. Now, as far as I'm concerned, I'm there as an ex-official member, which means I do not have a vote. So I'm not, I'm not a voting board member, we're there as a city staff support. If there's any questions, if there's something that comes up that might need some kind of expertise from us that we can help with, that's the limit of my role there. So.
And also, the mayor does have a vote on that board, but does not have a vote on this council unless there be a tie. So I think that's all we need to say about that. At this point in time, there's no hiding the fact that either of us are on that board. That is public, that's, can be found on a simple Google search. We've served on that board for years, since I've been mayor. I think it goes back to years and years before that, that those city official positions have been included on the Economic Development Foundation board. And Jim, through your public records request, you're right, I did look at the letter to the editor, but the letter was originated and generated by staff members. I was asked to look at it for content, and I made some notes on it, but I felt like the record did need to be cleared, because you flatly made some misstatements during that meeting. And we want to have an accurate public record in this hall, and that's necessary to do the people's business. So that's how that happened. Yes, it did. Any other public comments?
Hello, Megan Eckert. I just want to give you guys a positive word up here. A couple weeks ago, you know, the project came for First Norfolk Avenue, and the developer tasked me with, you know, starting conversations, letters of intent, things like that. I just want to say thank you for all the forward-thinking you guys have done for the city with public projects that spur on private investments. So because you took a chance and invested in Johnson Park, you know, we're seeing a $32 million development, Gary's have a big development going, all of our conversations, mine, with local businesses and out-of-town businesses, from Sioux City, from Lincoln, they've all been very positive, and it's been very, we've had a lot of good interest. We have an LOI from a coffee shop that's not local, that's going to provide a much-needed service that young professionals have requested. It will stay open until midnight, which is a need in Norfolk that we've heard for years. So this development is exciting. It's exciting to people that live here, and it's exciting to people that don't. So I just want to say thank you, you don't hear a lot of positives, but you're doing good things, and we have a yes culture here that brings people, that people notice, even people from other towns that are much bigger, that maybe shouldn't want anything to do with Norfolk, and now they do. So thank you for seeing the vision, thank you for voting for growth, and I think that it helps people out in ways that they don't understand, but it is, we can feel it. It's a fun place to live, and I've been excited the last two weeks with these conversations, because it's businesses that I would never have thought would have considered Norfolk, and they're open to it, they're open to the development and the city in general. So, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. We're now switching.
Hi, I'm David Jansma. One more thing. Eight months ago, I got online and filed a report about Clearfield between 25th and Valley High, being in considerable amount of disrepair. Got no response. Month ago, I did it again, after I picked two softball-sized pieces of concrete out of the middle of the road. The sewers caving in. And now the asphalt's all broke up that was overlaid on Valley High. It's time to fix it, guys.
I drove by there, I was trying to take some pictures, but I wasn't exactly 100% sure what you were, what we were talking about.
The curbs busted up in three places on the side, and now the asphalt's all busted up. No, it's not in real good shape.
Is that kind of by that stop sign there on Valley High there? Is that what you're, yeah, okay, okay.
But, no, right in front of the sewer, it's caving in, and there's big holes. Drive-through, you'll know it.
I stopped, got out, took a picture, and the neighbor thought I was up to something.
No, appreciate the comment. Will, Matt, you know, is that, have you guys seen that?
You guys can discuss this online. Anyone else have public comments?
Good evening. Pat Carney. I wasn't planning on speaking, but something piqued my interest. I've been in town a long time, my father's been in town a long time doing business downtown. I've seen a lot of change and a lot of growth in our, specifically our downtown, in our business community, and the relationship that that business community via the chamber has with the city. Great relationship. All of this downtown development is because of that. I can remember when downtown was desolate, it was an eyesore. Many of you up here remember that, but there was such a poor communication with the city and the business community during all those earlier years. And, you know, when I hear things like, we have a lack of transparency, we need everybody's input before we do anything, this never would have gotten done. You know, what I hear when I hear lack of transparency, I hear micromanage. We want, I want to know what every detail is of all of the projects that are going on. Guys, that's not going to happen. The citizens of Norfolk elect you to make those decisions, and we trust you to make those decisions. And if you start messing up, there's another voting cycle coming up, we can get rid of you. So you guys have done, the last several councils have done an excellent job developing Norfolk, putting us on the map, getting our name out there. All of that's great, so I want to congratulate all of you for doing what you've been elected to do. I just, you know, I look at the agenda tonight, it appears to be a fairly simple agenda, but as I think about all of the decisions that had to be made for all of those points, what does transparency look like? I mean, where do we draw the line between, is it important to this person to know all of the facts, or this person, or they don't care about all the facts? So you're elected to do your jobs, the city hires people to do their jobs and to present information to you so that you can make informed decisions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. All right, anyone else wishing to comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Paul Medelman. This is, you all know this, but some of the public might not know this, that, and I'm talking about TIF, so you have a 15-year TIF or a 20-year TIF, and Randy will attest to this, also I'm sure that the majority of those TIFs get paid off early, so the public, so those funds do start coming back to the city and the counties earlier typically than they would. They don't go for the 15 years normally, because you have to wait to get your assessed values from the county, if the county doesn't assess maybe as high as you'd like it, or as low or as high, I guess, but, so most of those are paid off before, and the 20-year gives that developer maybe a little bit more of a cushion to make things work and get his buildings filled up, get his properties sold. So it does help to, it is a help for the developer, and usually that money will start coming in quicker, as Randy's told me, on many of the projects, so.
Yes, you're correct, Paul. Often it does come in much earlier.
Okay. Just wanted to bring the public up to speed on that.
Thank you, Paul. All right, anyone else wishing to comment tonight? If not, seeing no one else, this meeting of the Norfolk City Council is adjourned. Good evening.